Call to order, a meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the City of Goodyear, for Wednesday, May 19th. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the clerk, as far as attendance goes, all commissioners are present, except for Commissioner Short. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 21st meeting, please?
I'll move we approve the minutes of, as written, of April 21st.
Okay. I have a mo— I have a motion from Commissioner Williams, and a second from the Vice Chair. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it six-zero. Okay. Public comments. If anybody would like to speak on a non-agenda item, this is the time to come up to the podium and speak. Seeing none, we will move on to the next order of business. You left off ex parte communications on the agenda. So, were there any ex parte communications from anyone?
No.
Anyone? There were no ex parte communications tonight, please. All right. I'm gonna open the public hearing on case 092000009, Pebble Creek, Phase One Planned Area Development, the PAD Amendment. We will also have the presentation on the preliminary plat, which is the following case, that is case 095000006, except we will take separate votes on each item. So, Mr. Cruccio, would you please make the presentation, or start us off?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission members. Both of these items were before you on March 17th. At that time, this request, it was for 16 new residential lots within the Eagles Nest Clubhouse facility. And here's the clubhouse, and here are the 16 lots that were proposed. At that meeting, a number of the residents within Pebble Creek were opposed to this request. As such, the applicant requested that both items be continued to give them more time to work with the residents and come up with a mutually acceptable plan. The applicant and residents, they met on April 9th to go over this proposal here. A couple of things were discussed, and an alternative plan is now being proposed. With this plan, we have 15 residential lots, and several of the lots had their widths reduced, which allowed then the addition of 43 additional parking spaces here at the north end of this Also, that 43 parking spaces gave us a total of 386 total within the Eagles Nest facility, and that is 316 car spaces and 70 cart spaces. Also, the landscaping along Ropes and Circle at the corner here at the intersection and along the entry drive is going to be maintained. And if any is disturbed during construction, there's a stipulation that the applicant has to replant. With these revisions, staff does find the PAD Amendment and preliminary plat acceptable. We are recommending approval of both, subject to the stipulations in the respective staff reports. With that as chairman, staff and the applicant can take any questions.
Okay. Questions, Commissioner Miller?
Yes. Previously, there was another suggestion in terms of fewer homes. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And what happened to that discussion?
The staff recommendation for fewer homes?
Yes, yes, that, the staff recommendation.
What we did was, we looked at the revised proposal here, and what our recommendation was, is reduce it by three lots, and in turn, that would allow us to gain about, we were thinking about 50 parking spaces, and keep a view corridor into the Eagles Nest facility. With this revision, what we found was basically, all of our intent was meant, was amet. We have 43 parking spaces. We have that kind of view corridor maintained into the Eagles Nest, and then along this line of sight here. And then, all the landscaping along Ropes and Circle here, and along here, was going to be maintained. So, we felt the applicant met most of our objective with our original staff proposal.
Met most of that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Williams?
He gave up one lot, plus some additional space, because he narrowed the width of some of the other lots. So, while he didn't give up three lots, he gave up the equivalent of some space between one and three. So, more than, he gave up more than just one lot, didn't he?
We gained more area by losing one lot, and you're correct, and by reducing the width of a few others.
Thank you.
Could, Steve, I'm sorry, other, Luke, Commissioner Peters? Steve, could you talk about the acreage difference? Because I think that, you, in the, in the staff recommendation, I believe you were shrinking the acreage available to housing from 4.9 acres to like 4.5 or 6, and then, and this resulting, this resulting plan meets that acreage restrict, reduction, is that correct? I may not have my figures exact, but I'm, but I thought it was pretty close.
That is, it does reduce, the original request was 4.9 acres, so this one is for 4.4 acres.
Okay, so, so, so in shrinking the lots, and giving up one lot, they, the developer has basically given back half an acre of, of open space, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
For park, yeah, I'm sorry, open space for parking, or open space and parking.
And that, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
And that areas, with the original proposal, those 16 lots came basically all the way up to the entry drive here. With this proposal, they've pulled back the PAD Amendment area to keep this row of parking, and then to add this additional row here.
Okay. Could you, the, the commission got a revised parking analysis, could you comment on that for the public, please?
Well, this, yes, no one's gonna be able to read that.
I think, Steve, if you turn that light, you don't kind of get it square, yeah, can you, yeah, well, I'm not sure if that's better or worse.
That looks like a lot of glare, is that?
Okay, fine. That's probably, that's as good as it's gonna get.
Basically, what is on the screen is the parking analysis, and what the applicant did was, there was testimony at the last commission meeting, that the peak occurred later in the evening, and that it was also a higher number of, of residents utilizing the Eagles Nest Clubhouse, and all the various activities that go on there. So, what he did was, he looked, he looked at his numbers, and the peak is now occurring later in the evening, around 7:00 and 8:00 PM, which was what the residents had mentioned, that the peak occurred in the evening. And he also looked at 100% use of the clubhouse in its entirety, which then raised the peak demand to 374 spaces. That was his calculation. And looking at all the uses in the center, 374 spaces would be required. And they're going to meet that by providing 70 cart spaces and the 316 car spaces, so 386 spaces, which will give them small excess of about 24 extra spaces for vehicles.
Thank you. Would the, any other questions of staff?
No.
Would the applicant, do you want to make a presentation, or why don't you come up so that you can identify yourself, so that the commission can ask you questions?
Chairman, Commissioners, my name's Steve Soriano, I'm with Ropes and Communities, and this is Mark Maloney with BNR Engineering, and we're on behalf of the applicant, we are the applicant. And we agree with everything that the planner just presented, and we can answer any questions.
All right. Questions of the applicant? Commissioner Miller?
I'm still thinking about it.
I'll come back, I'll come back to you. Commissioner Williams, I think, no? Commissioner Schlotzer?
Soriano?
Hello.
The last meeting, I think, was my, I think it was my suggestion, I can't, someone suggested that, based on the continuance, that you go back and meet with the community, with meetings. How did that go?
Mixed. We had a meeting with members of the community, and, and, and I would estimate, I don't know, 80 people were present, and some of them got their questions answered and were satisfied, and some of them continue to not be in support of this, and, and it's a community that will eventually be, you know, over 6,000 houses. So, of the 80 or so people that came to that meeting, not all were satisfied at the end. But some people were, there was a, a lot, a lot of, there was some misinformation that had been disseminated, we were able to present our side of it. That combined with the modifications of the plan to eliminate the lot, shrink the remaining lots, move them down, widening the view corridor of the clubhouse, combined with the, with the additional parking spaces, combined with keeping landscaping in place, was adequate to satisfy some of the people, but not all of them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm fine.
You're fine? Any other questions of the applicant?
Thank you.
Have a seat at the front, just in case we need you to come back. Okay, I'm gonna take, open it up for public comments. I'm gonna, Al Jerkstock, did I pronounce that correctly?
I'm not speaking for all the homeowners, I'm speaking for myself. I'm a resident of Pebble Creek, my name's Al Jerkstock. I live at 3554 North Hogan Drive in Eagles Nest Side. In my opinion, the Pebble Creek parking revision presented tonight is not, is really an illusion to hide the fact that the engineering company's objectives remain the same, and that is to squeeze more money from the original design, that Pebble Creek was a resort development with certain amenities available for investors that would be appealing for a potential homeowner. They accomplished their original objective. Pebble Creek is a quality location to live in. Homeowners are satisfied with their decision to invest in Pebble Creek's Eagles Nest. Now, the developer's new objective is based on, in my opinion, greed. With acres of property available in Pebble Creek at the Tuscany Falls site for future growth, someone decides to squeeze a little more money out of the sales program that has met all its original goals, at the expense of the homeowners who made Robson Communities a financial success. The property owners, when advised of this project, even offered to an alternative plan, which reduced the openness of the original Robson design, and the property owners had agreed to sacrifice some of the open areas, and as you saw tonight, this has been categorically denied by the engineering firm that's made the presentation. It's really an insult to the homeowners. We need some space for tour buses and property owners' cars to park at a central location like we enjoy today, and it's used quite a bit. My memory isn't as good as it's been in the past, but I do think this board's original suggestion to include a possible reduction of three lots from the developer's original proposal, their presentation tonight told you how they regard your ideas. It seems like Robson's management has decided to shed the public's perception of their developments from a quality, valued endeavor to a buyer beware program. To conclude, I hope your decision will help continue the Robson's public opinion at present. They are a quality developer of resort communities, and not solely in the business of personal gain, and hopefully, not solely in the business of personal gain at the expense of others. And I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Do you want to ask a question of the public? Sure.
I have a question. So, are you saying that you are not against it being shortened by three? In other words, you're not against houses being built?
Oh, no, no. We think that, as a homeowner and a practical investor in the community, we think that the area that's in question can be utilized more effectively by adding some homes to it, but not filling it up to create a, a project-type environment, instead of a resort, a recreational resort environment.
So, you were satisfied when it was going to be 13 units instead of?
Well, if there was enough room left for the operation of buses to park, and property owners to park their cars while they boarded the buses and left on their trips, I wouldn't personally object to that. I, I would think that the property use would be enhanced by adding a few more homes in there, but not take up the entire project like they are suggesting in the past and in tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions of the public at this point? Okay, thank you very much. Steve Stempel?
My name's Steve Stempel, I live at 3427 North 153rd Lane, which is, I live about one block down this street, street in question here. And I've just got three items I'll be really brief about. The original planning department's recommendation, I've got it in front of me here, stated that they were trying to preserve the existing view, sense of openness, and aesthetic design of the entrance of the Eagles Nest Clubhouse in a similar manner as currently exists on the north side of the Clubhouse Entry Drive. And I don't think this proposal that was presented tonight, or previously, is a similar manner to the north side. The north side's got a lot more setback on it, it's not, not symmetrical at all. I think it looks like it's, everything's really crammed in. You've got a parking lot essentially touching somebody's privacy wall, and I would like to urge the board that at the very least, Lot 8 be eliminated, and be used to create the sense of openness, the aesthetic, and have a similar setback to what is on the north side of the drive into the clubhouse. Second item is, at the meeting on, whatever that was, April 9th, with, with the gentleman behind us here, some of the people had addressed a desire to have a sidewalk leading from this area towards the clubhouse, because essentially, when all the homes are gonna be built and everything, there'll be walls and fences everywhere, and these people, although they'll live virtually adjacent to the clubhouse, will have to walk two or three blocks to get out and get around to the clubhouse and its amenities. And it was indicated that the water drainage area, which is currently between Lot 13 and Lot 14, could be designed to also function as a sidewalk for the people from this neighborhood to get over to the clubhouse area. As it's designed there, basically, you're gonna have a sidewalk that's gonna terminate in a slope going into a water retention basin, so it's really not very useful. I'd like to see if they couldn't relocate that from, to between Lot 12 and Lot 13, and then have it basically create a Y, the lower part would create, would drain down to the corner of the water retention basin, and the rest of it would function as a sidewalk to lead towards the parking lot, the Armed Forces Plaza, and the clubhouse. And the third item is, another item that came up during this meeting was, would these all be single-story homes? And the representative from Robson indicated, yes, it would all be single-story homes. However, just to prevent anybody misremembering in the future what they, was said, I would like to see if we could get this put in writing, that these would be single-family homes forever in this area. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. In, in the, the previous building, build, previous homes that were offered at Robson, there were some two-story homes.
Yes.
The Galleria model, the Marbella, a couple of others, I can't remember which. Are you no longer offering those homes, or could somebody build, could somebody go get the old plans out and build one, you know, build a two-story home on these?
While we don't have those models presently in the sales complex, yes, they are still eligible plans in, in the city, they're still approved for development, and they're not currently being marketed, but if somebody came in and said, hey, I'd like to buy that model, we would offer it.
Okay.
If, if this commission wants to impose a stip, actually, I, I did say that we wouldn't do two-story on there, so that would be a stipulation that if you imposed, we wouldn't object to.
Okay. We could draft that up before it went to council? Okay. All right, let me mark engineering question.
Sure.
The previous speaker suggested moving the, the walkway slash drainage ditch from between 13 and 14 to between 12 and 13, is that a doable, from, from an engineering and a drainage point of view?
From an engineering standpoint, we did look at the, the possibility of, of a sidewalk going in there. Of course, after our meeting with the public on April 9th, we had gotten some favorable decisions on that, and people that were also opposed to that. At this time, I, I don't believe that Robson planned on putting a sidewalk there, although it could be done, there is enough room, actually where it's planned now, for a sidewalk, if in the future, the HOA decided to put one in. There would be room adjacent to the retention basin, the retention basin could be reconfigured to provide more room in, in back of the lots to accommodate that. Of course, as I mentioned, Robson really didn't have any, any plans to put a sidewalk at this time, because of the both favorable and unfavorable responses regarding that.
Okay. What, what about, let me, let me ask, let me rephrase the question. Could, could the drainage channel be relocated to be between 12 and 13, or is that, is that I'm just asking for a top-of-the-head answer versus go in and do the calculations.
Right, right. It, it does affect the grading somewhat, because of the low point in the road moves a little bit north.
Okay.
And we have to fall away from the existing cul-de-sac located on 153rd Lane.
Right.
So, we would basically continuing grade from the end of the cul-de-sac, as it exists today, down to that low, low point. So, it does affect the grading, pushes that low point even further down, how does that reflect to the high water in the retention basin? Without actually investigating, I, I can't really tell you. I think it, it's potentially feasible for that, for that to work, although we have not done the engineering on that.
Okay, okay. That's, question.
Is it safe to say where the wash area is now was dictated by the contour of the land? That that's the low spot?
It was, it was dictated by the, the grade of the existing cul-de-sac on 153rd Lane, kind of providing a low spot in the area that worked, you know, you have to maintain minimal, minimal slopes along the longitudinal grade of the road. So, if you're looking at the end of the proposed cul-de-sac at 153rd Lane, we have to drain back towards that low spot. It, it seemed the most feasible in the location that we put it, and that's why we put it there.
Other, other, other questions? Commissioner Miller?
I'm just gonna ask about the sidewalk. So, am I right in when you said that the HOA would have to decide it today? Did you?
Well, that's not exactly what I said.
No.
I said that Robson hadn't, hadn't made plans for putting the sidewalk in now, and the reason being is, is there was opposition to it. There was also homeowners in the area that, that liked the idea. Because of the privacy issues and so forth, I think at this point, Robson would prefer not to put the sidewalk there.
But people walk through these washes anyway. I mean, that, that's been the experience. Hell, I've lived there for 12, 10 years, and people, I know people walk through them.
That's, can I?
Yes, please.
We, we want to make this just like all the other ones over there.
Okay.
We don't want to put the sidewalk in.
That's fine. Other questions of the applicant? Okay, you guys can have a seat again. Steve, we can add a stipulation of no two, no two-story homes in this, in, in these lots, before it goes to council? Okay. Anybody else from the public like to speak?
My name is Frank Castillo, I live in 3640 North 154 Lane. I've been in this community for 15 years, since the beginning, basically, and we've been trying to get the council to pay attention to us, I'm hoping they will. It's obvious the Robson communities working with the HOA, which is non-existent in our area, because it's three members, they are in the peril for Robson, two members are, are actual members of the community, so make the math, we never have a chance. In any event, especially with the sidewalk, they indicated in the future, they may do it, which is, forget about it, because they're not gonna do it anyway. But anyway, besides that, to not to take too much of your time, I agree 100% with the previous speakers. I'm fortunate, these meetings come up when everybody's out of town. We have a community with 50% of our residents leave just about this time. Therefore, we can't get people to come to this residence, to attend these meetings. So, it's convenience to certain people, and I would recommend that to have it when the community's here. If the purpose of the commission is to come up with the correct solution, that's probably what we should do. But obviously, it's not gonna happen. In any event, my recommendation, we still opposed to this project, we still feel that we could have compromised and have less houses built, so we still continue to have the open spaces that we purchased. It's obvious that this may not happen. At one time, the commission themselves indicated three lots will be open, now coming up with half a lot, or one lot. So, apparently, the greed, like the previous resident indicated, is very prevalent. And the only thing hoped that we have as the residents is yourselves. And the only thing hoped that we have as the residents is yourselves. So, myself, I serve in the council in Illinois. I serve in the commissions in Illinois. I understand what goes through. And, and my conscience, I always look of, what is the residents really want? Which side that are gonna be taken? We gotta ask questions. We gotta find out, is this what the residents say? I attended all the meetings. We have private meetings with Robeson. Very short, because bottom line, when we were visiting in their headquarters with these gentlemen's, bottom line, they told us, we are gonna do what we are gonna do, and that's it. And the, uh, bottom line was, well, probably the commission, Goodyear is gonna approve it, and we go with this, and that's it. Again, the majority of the people, Pebble Creek, are opposed to this. There's few people probably there in favor. So, if we would've had this meeting somewhere in November, you would've had a good turnout, you would've had the input of these people. And it's very important, residents count, in my opinion. So, we still opposed, we were ready to compromise, we think it's a good idea, like the previous resident indicated. It's fine to build few homes, but we still like to have this open spaces. So, um, sorry I took too long, I apologize, but I'm hoping that you, you, uh, help us. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other public?
Thank you. My name is Joe Sanzon. I live at 3464 North 153rd Lane. I'm one of approximately 10 homeowners on that, that street, which ends in a cul-de-sac. And, uh, from what, what I understood at the first meeting, or one of the earlier meetings, was that they could open that cul-de-sac. Is that still true? Is that gonna remain a cul-de-sac, or is it just gonna be a through?
It's gonna be straight, it's gonna, the cul-de-sac will move to the end of the parking lot where Robeson Circle is, and there will be a new Mulberry Lane, so that you'll have, um, both, you know, two entrances onto Robeson Circle.
I see.
One south, or east, or west, or wherever you are.
My, my, my concern is that, if, you live in Pebble Creek, you probably know, that that street is, was the old models many years ago. And it's a very narrow street, it's barely two lanes, it's just barely two lanes. And any day of the week, you can go there, there, there are service trucks, people parked in the street, and when you have that, you have, you basically one lane that's open, and then you have to weave in and out for many ti, many days. If that's opened up, as you intend to do, it's just gonna make that traffic situation a lot worse. And I'd just like that to be considered before you approve that plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other com, do you wanna, you don't have to say anything. Okay. Any other comments?
I'll answer any questions.
What?
I'll answer any questions.
None posed yet. Other comments? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and I'm going to...
Excuse me, I wanted to ask a question.
Come on up.
You didn't look up, so I didn't raise my hand. I apologize, I was waiting too.
My name's Michelle Smythe. I live at 3450 North 153rd Lane, and I'm on the fire lane, and that's my question, is, is the extension of the road going to be the same width, or is it going to be a full road?
Um, the answer is, it is going to be built to city standards, which is a full road. So, the road will widen out after the cul-de-sac, when the cul-de-sac is broken through, and where the new lots are going, will be a normal, regular Pebble Creek street, and Mulberry will be a regular Pebble, regular-sized Pebble Creek. So, the only, um, throat, or narrowing of the road, is the existing 130, 153rd Lane, which is in the former model village.
Okay. I would like to add, then, just to my comments, that, um, I agree with Mr. Sanzon, my neighbor, that, um, he called it two lanes. I don't agree with that. On trash day, you can't even get one car, you can barely get one car down the street. So, I think that, um, I would appreciate it if it would be looked at, that, that cul-de-sac not be extended, because of that situation, that it is really congested now, and it will just be further congested with that. So, I'd appreciate you considering that. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Last call. Now the public hearing is closed. Can I get a motion to, for this case that we are considering, please? Motion to approve, motion to deny?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend to approve case 09-200-00009.
Okay.
With the revised, uh, stipulation.
Do we, Steve, do we need the stipulation in this case, or, or if we rewrite stipulation 17 in the next case, which talks about the single-family houses on the lots, and just put it in there? Is that gonna survive, is, Mr. Schmitz?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that you put 'em in both.
I have a motion from the vice chair recommending approval with a added stipulation that only single-story houses be built in this, in this, in these 15 lots. Second. I have a motion from the vice chair, a second from Commissioner Schlosser. Comments from the commission?
This is only talking about changing the pad, correct? It is not about the preliminary plot and how many houses. Is that correct? What we're voting on now is the first part.
That's correct. We're voting on the first part.
Thank you.
Any, any further questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it six-zero. Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing on case 09-500-00006, Pebble Creek, Phase 1, Unit 1A Preliminary Platte, which is the layout of the proposal. Mr. Cratchit, do you wanna make any additional comments? Seeing none, does the applicant wish to make additional comments? Yes, come up, please.
Can, can we try the overhead one more time? All right, I think you guys can see it. This is the entrance road coming into the clubhouse area. The original application had lots coming all the way up to this property line, and, and what I heard at the last P&amp;Z meeting, and what I heard at the meeting with the homeowners, is that they wanted this window widened, well, at the time, it was, it was this, but they wanted the view corridor widened, and we agreed, and, and that, and that's what I heard from the commissioners, and that's what I heard from the homeowners. Up until tonight, this has never been about how many houses you get. It's, it's, it's been about, can we, can we get a big win, can we get a good, or an acceptable, or, or an optimal view corridor through here? And that's what, and that's what we, we endeavor to do. In the process of widening the view corridor, we were able to, to bring in these 40... Rough, 43, I believe. Forty-three or so parking spaces, which was an added perk or a benefit. In conversations with the homeowners board, which we do have, you know, we own most of the lots, so we have, we do have members on the board, but in, in conversations with the members of the, the homeowners board, one of the advantages of the additional lots is additional dues-paying members, and that's something they look favorably upon. And, and, and the goal was to widen the view, not necessarily to reduce the number of houses. Um, and then the last thing is, you can kinda see on this, as far as the symmetry goes, we, we tried to address that. This is an existing arts and crafts building, that's the corner right there.
Shut that down, Steve.
Yeah, pull it down, sorry.
There you go. Thank you.
So, this isn't, this is the existing arts and crafts building, so this is really unscientific, but we tried to provide symmetry. If anything, it appears that the, 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 the space to the houses on this side might be a little larger than on this side, but, but that's not the scale. So, did we do a perfect job of symmetry? No, and I'm not claiming we did, but you can see that, that we moved the boundary of the houses from here to here, and from here to here. And, 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 and it's, 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 uh, less than some wanted, and more than others wanted, uh, and, and I think it, it is a compromise, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have questions of the applicant?
Um, no, I have a question for Steve.
For Cratchit?
Steve.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Steve, my question is, and I'm not trying to belabor the point, but going back to the initial proposal for staff, is the, the, the view that, uh, was suggested before equal to what is being proposed tonight?
Commissioner Miller, you mean the staff recommendation in March?
Yes.
No, that...
Is it more or less the same?
It is less of a, what staff had originally proposed.
Substantially less?
I, I, I'll try to show it here, maybe that will. What we tried to do was mimic what was up here, and what we have here is a view corridor that kinda goes like this.
Okay.
Kinda flares and widens out. And that was staff's recommendation in March, was something similar. You know, it would go like that. And as you can see, the pen kinda clips lot number nine there. So, it is a less of a corridor than what we had originally proposed, but we felt if the applicant and residents, if this was a compromised position, it, we've thought it met our, our initial objective of keeping a view corridor.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions of either staff or the applicant? Anybody? Does anybody from the public wanna say something different than what we heard at the previous item on the agenda? Is there anybody who would like to speak? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and I'm going to ask for commission action on this case, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of case 09-500-00006. With the revised stipulation.
Could I, could I, yeah, could I have a revision for stipulation 17, that all lots are to be single-family homes? Is that, is that acceptable to the maker?
Yes. That's where I was going. Single-story.
I'm sorry, single, single-story homes, not single-room homes. Did I say that?
Single-family.
Oh, single-family, okay. God, I know that, I know attached housing is coming up certainly later in the day. Okay, I have a motion from the vice chair. Can I have a second from, second from Commissioner Peters? You didn't think you were gonna get away with that, did you? All right, commission comments? Commissioner Miller?
I, 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 I thank the applicant for making some concessions. I do also know that the people who purchased there years ago, and we can't say that they were lied to by the salespeople, because the salespeople, the developer and the builder are all the same. So, they came with an expectation, and I understand that, I, I think it's, you can't do very much with a parking lot. However, I think that a better compromise could have been made, and I will be voting against the 15 homes.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? Comments, comments? The chair would like to make a comment. Chair has been involved with this for, since it started, and the chair basically feels that the developer, by giving up a half an acre of land, and adding 43 additional parking spaces that the community does need, um, and shrinking the lots, has, um, made a good-faith effort into making a workable compromise, and the chair will be voting in favor of this item. Any other comments from the commission? Okay, I'm gonna call a question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion passes five to one with the revised commission. Thank you very much. For those of you who continue to remain opposed to this, you will have an opportunity to talk to the city council, um, when it is on their agenda. I suggest you look at the city website, and there will be ample of notification when that takes place. And for those of you who are in favor of it, I strongly suggest you come down and tell council that you think it's a good idea.
Mr. Chairman, it's, in all likelihood, it'll go on the fourth Monday in June.
Fourth Monday in June, June 24th, something like that? June 21st?
I'm being told it's the 21st, but please check calendars.
That's budget night.
It'll be doubly entertaining.
I am gonna open, open case 09-300-00003, St. Thomas Lutheran Church Daycare Facility. And Mr. Cratchit, again, is going to make the presentation.
Mr. Chairman, church members, uh, this is a request for an adult senior daycare, uh, on the St. Thomas Church and School campus here at Saraval and Van Buren. Surrounding this property, we have a wildflower ranch to the south, we have undeveloped property to the east, and then the compass church. Here is also residential property, Harvest Baptist Church. Across Saraval to the west, we have a undeveloped commercial parcel in Canyon Trails, and then some Canyon Trails residential here to the southwest. The daycare is proposed in the existing chapel building, which is this building right here. This building here is the existing assisted living facility, and this here is the school building, uh, which school is no longer in session, or has been closed for a few years now. Uh, this is in a single existing driveway from Van Buren, and this is a 41 parking spaces here that the proposed daycare will utilize. Proposal is for 20 to 25 clients, operation, uh, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Some Saturday hours are anticipated, and the daycare clients will use this existing drive and use these existing parking spaces. No new development on the site is proposed, except for any necessary interior improvements to the chapel building. Staff finds that the proposed use will be a public convenience, and, uh, desirable for the public welfare, will be compatible with the surrounding uses in the area. Uh, we are recommending approval, subject to the two stipulations in the staff report.
Questions of the applicant?
Uh, Steve, is the church still operational? Do they still utilize the church on Sunday, or whatever?
Yes, sir, the applicant probably answered that maybe better, but it's my understanding, they, they do use the chapel. If this does go through, and the use does move forward, that there's space in the school, since no one is using the school building right now, that they could convert some of that to a chapel.
And, uh, other questions of staff? Steve, in the narrative you talked about, or someone talked about, um, dividing the, the whole parcel into three parts and selling it off, could you diagram what is that proposal as best you know it?
They do want to subdivide three lots. Uh, one lot will kind of encompass the parking lot, the driveway, and the school building.
Okay.
That's Lot A, and that's about, uh, four acres. Lot B will encompass the assisted living facility, the chapel building, kind of like this, and the balance will be Lot C. Lot B's about 1.8 acres, uh, Lot C's about two acres.
If, if this subdivision is done... If, if this subdivision is done, or this lot splitting is done, will lot A and lot B have cross, um, parking easements type things done? Because otherwise, because the parking lots in lot A and the facility is going to be in lot B.
Yes, sir, as part of the minor land division, the applicant did submit draft cross-parking access drainage easements or agreements, and those will be recorded with the minor land division.
Okay. Other questions of staff? Would the applicant like to come up and speak or answer questions? And please identify yourself for the record.
My name's Kirk Youngbluth. I am the representative for the St. Thomas Lutheran Ministry, ownership of the property. They've asked me to, to take care of this for them, and, um, I'll answer any questions I can help you with.
Okay. Do we have any questions of the applicant? Any questions of the applicant? Seeing none, have a seat, thank you very much. Anybody on the public like to make a comment on this case? Seeing that the public has left us and only applicants are here...
I, I...
Oh, I'm sorry, Mark, I, I apologize. Mark's a friend. I have a few.
Still? Even after your vote?
I have a few, like I said. Okay, seeing nobody from the public, I'm going to close the public hearing on this case and ask for a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I move we recommend approval of case number zero-nine-three-zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero-zero-three with stipulations.
I second.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Williams, a second from Commissioner Miller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it six-zero. Thank you very much. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing for case zero-eight-six-three-zero-zero-zero-zero-one-zero, comprehensive sign package for Spring Hill Suites and Fairfield Inn and Suites. And who's... Oh, Mr. Cratchit is doing this one, too.
Last one.
Last one. Okay.
I'm sorry.
Wow. I lost it. Oh, there it is, okay. I'm ready, Steve.
Mr. Chairman, commission members, this is a comprehensive sign package for a development located the southwest corner of McDowell Road, Bullard Avenue. Surrounding land uses to the north is the proposed Estrella Falls Regional Shopping Center. We have Palm Valley Promenade with Lifetime Fitness. To the east is Centerscape at Palm Valley with the existing PF Chang's and Red Robin. To the south is Interstate Ten, and to the west is a proposed commercial parcel in the Goodyear Plant Regional Center. Development intended for the site is two hotels and various restaurant and retail uses. Since more than three uses were proposed within the center, a comprehensive sign package was required, and also since deviations to our sign code were proposed, this comprehensive sign package has to go through the planning commission and city council. And this is what is proposed in the comprehensive sign package, two freestanding monuments along Bullard, two along McDowell, and two directional signs along the main entry drive, along with wall signage for the various tenants.
Steve, could, could you put that drawing back there? I don't mean to interrupt your presentation, but could you show us where the hotels are actually going to be on this site and where the restaurant pads are? Because I really couldn't figure this one out.
Mr. Chairman, commission members, we do not have a, this is not a site plan that was provided, we do not have a site plan with these proposed buildings and their footprints on here, but what is intended is this is the hotel, well, this is, this is Interstate Ten, this is McDowell Road, Bullard. What's intended is the hotels here. It's two hotels, but they're connected in this proposal.
Okay.
Two restaurant pads here fronting along Bullard, and then you'll have retail buildings and pads along Bullard and McDowell. And then interior to the site will be parking here, here, and around the hotel.
Okay, thank you. Keep going now.
These are the freestanding monument signs, the directional end of signs along Bullard and McDowell. These are the ones that'll be along McDowell and Bullard, and they exceed zoning ordinance requirements with height and copy area. Same thing for the directional signs, a little taller, a little more copy area than what is allowed in our sign code. And then also with the wall signage, sign code allows basically one square foot of copy area per foot of linear building fringe for the front, and a half square foot of copy area for the rest, the back and the sides. Sign package is proposing 1.25 square feet for all sides of the building. However, given the property's location, next to a regional center, freeway interchange, surrounding commercial uses, giving what's potentially proposed on the property, staff is supporting their request, subject to our six stipulations in the staff report. With that, Mr. Chairman, I can answer any questions.
Questions of staff? Questions of staff? Mr. Williams, Commissioner Williams.
You know, I'm, I, I guess I have some questions about the, not the big ones, the six-foot, the multi-tenant vehicle directional sign and the hotel vehicular directional sign. You know, the zoning ordinance is three foot, and they want six foot, and I, I guess, you know, I'm not sure why the zoning ordinance is three feet, but with hotels and restaurants in the area, I think there will be some pedestrian traffic, and I think six-foot signs, you know, and again, it's not a site plan, so I'm not sure how it's going to lay out, but I think six-foot signs might make it harder to see pedestrians who, not all of us are over six-foot high, and I'm, I guess I would be in favor of having those signs be four or five feet rather than six feet, so that if there is pedestrian traffic in the area, the pedestrians would be visible to drivers.
I thought these signs were in the middle of the median, so the pedestrians wouldn't be walking around, but that's okay.
That, you know, I'm, I'm not sure where they are, but there will be pedestrian traffic between the hotels and the restaurants. And there's got to be a reason the zoning ordinance requires three foot, not six foot.
Point taken, or?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, commission members, uh...
Maybe Mr. Schmitz would like to, to deal with that.
But, I was going to, I wanted to hear what Steve had to say first.
Oh, okay.
Then I'll tell you if I agree with it.
Oh, okay. Well, we've had this sign ordinance discussion before, you know, like two years ago.
Or every time a new sign package comes up, when, when they want to exceed the zoning ordinance, every single time?
Yes.
I mean, those discussions?
We've had those discussions. Okay, Steve, it's your turn.
Mr. Chairman, commission members, an applicant can expound further if I misspeak, but what we had here was an entry drive that was partly going to serve the West Core parcel to the west, as you can see on this drawing. It heads from Bullard and then will head into the West Core parcel. It's, uh, going to be a larger driveway, larger width, little, supposed to be enhanced landscaping, partly with West Core in mind. I guess the applicant has been working with West Core on this. And the signage was a little larger, given the larger drive, it's my understanding, and the need to tell customers, stop, go left or right to go to these services, these establishments, as well to, basically to direct the customers to these uses. They are both proposed in the median, which we were, we would look for in the site plan review to make sure they were not in any sort of site visibility easements, that's a standard requirement. Other than that, the applicant can expound further, or, I don't know if that answered the question, but...
Other, go, Commissioner Williams, please, continue.
Well, just, I, I guess just so that, you know, when you get to the site plan, if somebody could make a note of that, and, and, you know, make sure that the signs are located where there will be no pedestrian traffic, or so it doesn't cause a, a safety issue with pedestrian traffic in the area.
Mr. Chairman, commission members, that is something that staff will do, that's part of our review. We will definitely, during the site plan review, when these signs are officially formally cited, that's one of the things we look for, engineers look for that all the time, to make sure there's no conflicts with pedestrians and vehicular sight.
Thank you.
Other, other questions of staff? Mr. Vice Chair? Um, what, if, if we were to remove one of the A signs on McDowell, so that there was one A sign on McDowell and two A signs on Bullard, would the square footage come more under, under, you know, would it be more in compliance with the ordinance? Or is it, or is it the fact that the signs are fourteen by, nineteen by fourteen?
Mr. Chairman, commission members, it's, uh, the frontage on McDowell is, is a little bit short of what the sign code would say to have two signs. I think it's about 600 feet of frontage, you need 660. It's a little short, but we felt that they were close enough. The signs themselves also, each one does exceed what would be allowed.
They are, I, they are bulky and uninspiring. And I will allow you to finish, and the applicant may come up and address the commission.
Let me just add on to, you know, I guess, the, the two on the corner, you know, could the two on the corner be replaced by one right at the corner that's angled and visible from both McDowell Road and Bullard Avenue? You know what I'm saying?
Mr. Chairman, commission members, we usually see on a corner some form of entry monumentation wrapping around a corner somehow.
Okay, thank you.
Would the applicant like to come up and address the commission and defend their design?
Sure.
Knock your socks off. Please identify yourself for the, for the commission.
I'm Brent Van Deeman with Boots and Duke Sign Company. And I also have Mr. Brent Sanchez, he's with Trade Corp Partners and represents the, the retail and restaurant arm of this development. I'd like to thank Mr. Cratchit for all his hard work on this. We've, um, started this process quite a few months ago and have kind of, uh, worked hard at this to come up with a, a nice design for the, for the project, and a comprehensive sign package that we felt was, um, going to serve both the community and the project itself. You know, it's a fourteen-acre mixed-use site, we've got hotels, we've got restaurants, we've got retail, and we felt it was important to get enough signage out on the street to let people know what was in the project and properly direct them in there. As he said, we're just a little bit short on McDowell on the frontage to allow two freestanding signs, but with the scope of the project and the surrounding projects around us and, and what they've been approved for comprehensive sign packages, we felt it was appropriate. The hotel definitely wanted identification where they could on this project to bring travelers and whoever might be looking for the hotels in, so we needed to accommodate that on the freestanding signs. And then we also wanted to get a few panels on there for the, for the restaurant pads and the tenants that might be deeper into the project, to give them some presence. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of the applicant? Steve, could you come up? I, I have a couple of questions that I wanted to ask you, and I forgot, and I apologize. When we did CenterPoint, um, a couple of years ago, did we not give them, because they back on I-ten, didn't we give them more signage, square footage on the buildings themselves as a result of the position of the, of the development?
Mr. Chairman, I might have to defer that to...
Evergreen Devco's here, they could probably tell us that you, that we did, right? I, I thought we did. Okay.
Yes.
Yes, and, yes, we did, right, Sean? Okay. All right, next, next question. On the parcel between the B signs and the A signs on McDowell, there's going to be, that's not all parking, that's going to be some kind of strip, something's going to be developed in there, right? There's going to be some more pads? Or, or is it just the two restaurant pads in the hotel?
Mr. Chairman, where was that location?
Between the, south of McDowell, north of the B-two signs.
Over here?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, there was, there's...
I mean, I know it's not there, but there's pads there, right?
Right, pads and, and inline shops proposed along it. With no site plan, we don't have anything formal, but...
Okay, that, that's, okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions? Anybody from the public like to make a comment?
Sure.
Mark, please identify yourself for the record.
My name is Mark Pelletier, I live at one-five-seven-four-two West Fairmount in Goodyear, and I feel compelled, as seeing as I am the public, to speak. And I have no knowledge of this whole project before this. Just a couple of thoughts. As a general statement, the ordinances are established, and it establishes something, and I would think the commission would be looking for compelling reason anytime a variance is generated or is asked for from, from ordinance. Obviously, I'm not qualified to judge whether you've been given compelling reason or not. I'm not clear, I guess, if the signs that are here, here, and here, are they intended to represent any and all future developments in this area? And I think I heard the chairman's question was dissimilar, and saying that, my concern was, is somebody going to come in there later and ask for yet more signage? And forgive my ignorance of how the whole process works. The only other thing I would ask the commission to give consideration to is, and I want to thank these developers for bringing something here, so that we have more than the hoped-for Estella Falls, Estrella Falls Regional Mall, but my thought is, is that these folks are here, they're here before the mall, they want to establish their presence, and that's good. If the ordinance says three and they want six, is the next guy that's going to build over here going to need nine to establish his presence there? Comments? Not really against anything, just some thoughts. Thank you for your attention.
All right, thank you very much for your comments. Any other member of the public like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion on this case, please. All right, I need a motion, guys, to get this rolling. Luke?
I'll move to approve case number one-zero-two-zero-zero-zero-zero-one.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Peters and a second from Commissioner Schlosser, and I thank them both from the left-hand end of the podium, and we will take commission comments.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm...
I was reading off the wrong...
I was reading off the wrong case number.
Okay, we're, we're going to amend the motion, if, if the maker agrees, to case 08630.
Yep, 00010.
All right, thank you very much, and the second. Commissioner Miller, excuse me.
I, I agree, when do we stop? We keep giving, they get bigger and bigger, and I'm with Sean on this.
Commissioner Lax?
I'm a guest.
It's okay, you'll really be a guest when I speak.
Throughout my tenure on, on the commission, it seems like, to my chagrin, or to those of my fellow commissioners, that I hate signs, because consistently, I, I have argued this point, that, that we have an ordinance that suggests a appropriate amount of signage, and I have yet to see one, a comprehensive sign package, that has actually not exceeded what the ordinance allows. And while I can appreciate, in some cases, that there are compelling reasons to go beyond what the current ordinance allows, these signs are just too big. I don't, I actually like the design, I, you know, they look good, but I just wish that they were, you know, smaller, a third, or, or, or half. And, you know, with that being said, I, I won't be supporting the, the proposal tonight.
For, probably one of the first times, the chairman is going with the minority, which is probably going to leave us with a tie vote, but, I, I'm sorry, I think the, the monument signs are just too bulky, and are not inspiring, as far as I'm concerned. I, I mean, I've seen the Australia Falls sign package, and I know you're trying to differentiate from them. I, I, I can easily support two signs on Bullard, and I can easily support a sign, one sign on McDowell, but I just, almost twenty feet wide is just, I would rather see them taller and narrower than the way they are, and I'm just not going to support this. So, seeing that we have three nay votes, and...
Maybe, maybe four, because...
Maybe four. I'm going to ask...
And I don't have a problem with the monument signs, or the building signs, but I, you know, I, I don't remember very many directional signs that we've had, that we've approved that were six feet high. I just think six feet for the directional signs is way too much, and I probably will vote against it.
We have a motion on the floor, however, we can table that motion, if the maker would agree to that, and we can offer you another option. We can offer you a continuance, and you can go back with staff and work with your client, and see what you would like, or you can take a vote on what is going to happen, so...
Mr. Chairman, I'm okay with that. I was actually just making the motion for pointed discussion, and I plan to vote against this.
All right, well, I, Commissioner Schlosser, would you like to make it unanimous, or, as a free...
I think the motion needs to be withdrawn, and, and would encourage a continuance. That'd be my advice, having heard everybody's comments.
If that's acceptable to the applicant, and acceptable to staff, we're going to table the motion, and I would ask for a motion to continue this item to a future meeting.
Move to continue.
All right, so, I have a motion to continue, I have a second, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, thank you. I think you've heard the comments, I think you need to get with your client, and with staff, and come up with something that'll work for the commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to, does anybody need a break, or do we want to keep plugging through? Okay, going to open the public hearing, case 102000001, Australia Fall, Australia Commons P A D Amendment, public hearing, and Ms. Wilkin is going to present.
Thank you, Chairman Gelsner, and members of the commission. The city has received a request to rezone 3.4 acres of the Australia Commons P A D from the two our single-family residential district to the district, which allows for a mix of commercial, office, and multifamily residential uses. I can have Elmo. This subject property is located about 300 feet east of the intersection of Australia Parkway and the future Fillmore Street. It is surrounded by three sides, by the Australia Commons P A D, and to the west, on the already-built portions, is Australia Crossroads Commercial Development. This is the existing land use plan within the Australia Commons P A D, and as you can see, there's this one portion, this is the subject property, which allows for a single-family residential, and it kind of floats there by itself. The property to the west of this, right here, was rezoned to C2, and a use permit for a QuickTrip service station was approved by council on February 22, 2010. And during the review of that service station, staff noted that this was kind of an odd piece, adjacent to a future automotive station, and at that time, staff suggested that perhaps the district would be a more appropriate use. And so, thus, Evergreen Devco came in with this P A D amendment request. And this is what they came in into, and as you can see, the new boundary is a more logical boundary for the district, and this would be the location of a, of Fillmore Street, right here. And so that acts as an appropriate transition point between the commercial-type uses to the south, and this number three is multifamily residential use. So it acts as a good transition. This amendment is in conformance with the original concept and intent of the Australia Commons P A D. It's also consistent with the goals and objectives of the general plan. Staff does recommend approval, and this concludes my presentation. Representatives of the applicant are also available for any questions or comments.
Okay, questions of staff? Question, would the applicant like to come up?
Do we know, do we know when the QuickTrip construction is going to start? Is that imminent?
Come on up, please, and identify yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, Commission members. I'm Kelly Hayes with Evergreen Devco, 2390 East Camelback. We just started our CDs for QuickTrip this week, and got a site plan approval last week, so they have started their construction documents, hope to start construction by the end of the summer.
All right, thank you. Other question, Commissioner? Okay, anybody from the public like to make a comment on this? Okay. Seeing, seeing that the public does not need to make a comment on this case, I am going to call for a motion. Can I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion, we approve case 10-200-00001, with stated stipulations.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Miller, second from Commissioner Williams, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, six-zero, thank you very much. Okay. Did that one. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing on case 095000007, Australia Gulf Village Parcel 5.1 Preliminary Platte.
Chairman Gelsner, would you like to do each case individually, or would you like me to give a presentation for all three cases?
Let's give a presentation for all three cases, and I will make the announcement, and then you can start. We'll take questions, and we'll do an individual vote. So, we are going to have a presentation on case 10500001, Australia Gulf Village Parcel 5.5 Preliminary Platte, and we are also going to have a presentation on case 09500008, Australia Village, Australia Gulf Village Parcel 5.3 Preliminary Platte. Ms. Wilkin, please take it away.
Thank you, Chairman Gelsner, and members of the commission. On February 22, 2010, council approved an amendment to the Gulf Village P A D for parcels 5.1, 5.3, and 5.5, which are located along West Star Drive, which runs about here. This amendment allowed for higher densities, but it also enhanced the design requirements of the structures. Newland Communities has now submitted the preliminary plats for the three parcels. The preliminary plat for parcel 5.1 subdivides 39.4 acres into 110 single-family residential lots. The density for this parcel is 2.79 dwellings per acre. The typical lot width will be 60 feet wide by 110 feet deep, and access will be provided off of West Star Drive. And this community has the option of either being gated or not gated, and that'll be determined at the time of final plat approval, when there's an actual home builder decided. The preliminary plat for parcel 5.3 subdivides 23.3 acres and 81 single-family residential lots. The density for this parcel is 3.5 dwellings per acre, and the typical, typical lot size will be 50 feet by 110 feet deep. And finally, the preliminary plat for parcel 5.5 sub, excuse me, subdivides 64.1 acres into 373 single-family lots, and the density for this parcel is 4.57 dwellings per acre. The west portion of this parcel, about right here, will include 119 single-family detached lots, and this lot size will be 50 by 110, which is the same as parcel 5.3. The east portion of this parcel, this area right here, is planned for 174 single-family attached lots, and these lots are 45 feet wide by 110 feet deep, and this will allow for 87 structures on seemingly 90-foot wide lots. We talked about that during the zoning, that it's similar to a duplex on a 90-foot wide lot, but these are single-family homes because of the lots. The parcels 5.3 and 5.5 are planned at this time to be a gated communities. These plats are in conformance with the zoning for the property and the subdivision regulations, and staff recommends approval of the preliminary plats. And this concludes my presentation, and the applicant is available for any questions or comments. Thank you.
Questions of staff? Katie, 5.5, was that not the parcel that we had a lot of contention from the residents who, no one's here tonight to contend this?
That is correct, that is the parcel we had a lot of contention in their defense. We don't notify the public of plats, we just post the, the agenda a week ahead of time, so it would take the savvier resident to keep up, but, this, this, this was the parcel in question.
Okay, thank you, that's okay. If they're a savvy resident, they would have known that this item was on the agenda. Other questions of staff? Questions, Mr. Prescott, do you want to come up and make a presentation, or answer questions, if...
He wants to talk about his comprehensive sign package.
No, he doesn't have a sign package.
Just kidding.
David Prescott, Newland Communities, 2850 East Camelback Road, Phoenix, Arizona, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions of the applicant? Seeing none, but I have a question for you after this case, after all of these cases close, okay? So, stay up front, please.
Okay.
All right, anybody from the public like to make a comment? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on case 09500007, Australia Gulf Village Parcel 5.1, and ask for a motion.
Move to approve case 09500007.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Peters, and a second from the vice chair, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, six-zero. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing on case 105000001, Australia Gulf Village Parcel 5.5 Preliminary Platte. Any additional staff information? Seeing none? Any comments from the applicant? Seeing none? Anybody from the public like to make a comment? Seeing none? I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we recommend approval of case 10-500-00001, with stipulations.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Williams, and a second from Commissioner Peters, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, six-zero. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing on case 09500008, Australia Gulf Village Parcel 5.3 Preliminary Platte. Any staff, additional staff comments? Any additional applicant comments? Any additional public comments? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve case 095000008.
I have a motion from Commissioner Peters, and I...
Second.
Have a second from Vice Chair Lox, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, six-zero, thank you very much. Okay, staff communications, but I'm, but I want...
I, I think we need to thank the public, here is a gentleman had a big load on his shoulders representing the public, made some very good comments, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark, we truly do appreciate your comments, and for staying for the whole, for the whole thing. Mr. Prescott, last, two things. At last council meeting, we had, there was an item that you pulled because the agreement didn't get squared away. Where do we stand on that?
The, we drafted an agreement last week, sent it to the city, and I think yesterday, I was told by the city manager that there'd be a agreement revision sent to us, which were, and our attorney and their attorney, city's attorney, discussed, had a phone call today, it sounded to me like they're going to get it squared away, and it's going to address, the, the issue is about the stipulations for road improvements next to parcels we don't have access to, and, and existing development agreements, but I think, sounded to me like they had everything squared away. I wasn't in the conversation, but it sounded like everything was getting squared away and getting addressed, and there's a, there's a wide variety of outlined issues that probably Harvey Kraus and I will continue to discuss beyond this case.
Okay, so the commission is not, so this item, when it reaches council again, you're not going to embarrass the commission by not having this squared away, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to embarrass the commission, however, I may, no, I'm just kidding, yeah, no, I, I don't tend to embarrass the commission in any way or manner, because I appreciate your time and effort. This was a very contentious, staff can attest to this, of stipulations that we, the city's viewpoint and our viewpoint are pretty much opposite on this one, so, and my obligation is to fend for the developer's investment, and, and the city's responsibility is to fend for the city's investment, and that's what we're doing, and it sounds to me like we came to an agreement.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next question. At the last public meeting, you requested the removal of stipulation number two from zoning case 700200-00010, and you and Mr. Schmitz were going to get together, where does that stand?
Mr. Schmitz and I did get together, and Mr. Schmitz explained that there isn't, I was requesting a commission initiative, which I've done in other cities, but the ordinance here doesn't really provide for a commission initiative, which means the commission becomes the applicant, so, and Lou, Mr. Schmitz explained to me that I can file the application, and I can ask for a fee waiver, and then take it forward, and, and request the removal of the stipulation, and I think that Harvey Kraus and I need to have more discussion before I bring that forward.
All right, thank you very much for the update. Staff communications, Mr. Schmitz?
The only thing I have to add, Mr. Chairman, is to remind you that on Monday night, there will be a public hearing on the digital marquees, as the council wanted to take additional input on that. input on that particular item. So, that is scheduled for Monday's, uh, city council meeting.
For, a word of, a, a procedural question, will, there's a public hearing, but no action is, will be taken. Is that correct?
Uh, that's correct. It's primarily just to take, to take comment and input.
And then if we were to go forward with this, would the digital billboards come before the zoning commission as an item for our review, or would it go directly to council?
As I understand it, the approach that is being taken is to consider issuing it under a license rather than a zoning permit, and so it would probably just stay with the council and go through a request for proposal process.
Okay, commissioners, duly noted. If you oppose this, and I know some of you do, I strongly suggest you make your comments known to the city clerk, and she will distribute them to all of the council people, um, because you do have some input on this. Anything else? What? Take this home, put it in your notebook. Motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second. Done. Thank you very much.